It being six thirty and then we'd like to follow the meeting in Manchester by the sea select board to order. Brian. Kathy, Anne is here and John. This meeting is being recorded. Are there any public findings? Items not on the agenda? There anybody online that?
Would I see that or not? All right, I'll pull that up.
Can't do two things at once.
That's fine. I'm used to it.
Apparently, there is none. The chairman's report. He has said trash has not been picked up on. Harbor Street. Ridge Street.
It's been variable. Like on Pine Street, we had trash picked up and not recycling. Some streets had both picked up, it looks like, and some had one.
Mine was picked up, not mine personally, but my neighbors'. My bag was too heavy. They picked up by recycling, but not like.
So, some stuff is getting done, but it's.
But it's happened.
Is that just today's?
Yeah, most of Pine Street was still there.
All the recycling. Lower Pine had trash picked up.
The more or less western side of the town gets picked up on Monday and the rest of the town gets picked up on Tuesday. I've heard that the union was not blocking trucks. In Gloucester. You would hear more.
Yeah, so. Well, as we all know, Republic. Union went on strike on at midnight of the thirtieth of June. So, on Tuesday. Our trash had been picked up on Monday and then on Tuesday, our DPW did the collection. And. This week, we've been notified by Republic that they would have their secondary crew. And, you know, it should be, collection should be happening as usual, Monday and Tuesday, both trash and recycling. They are working with a backup crew who isn't used to the route. They may not have as many people. So, if there is. We want to know if there's any roads not being picked up so that maybe we can get, have them. Pick them up tomorrow. If not, we have to come up with some other. Arrangement, but we, we did expect there to be some, some hurdles with this backup crew.
You know, this is Marlene Dolan. We live up on Woodcrest Road. Hi, Anne, hi, everybody and. I just wanted you to know the same thing with Kathy is up here, which is that. Trash picked up, yes. Recycling, no. And I know that we are on the same schedule as Craft's Court, so I think we're all on what Anne said. So, if we need to take it all in, that's perfectly fine. We're happy to do so.
I can see it's going over to Wednesday, maybe.
It's just the raccoons. Don't respect bags.
They'll be accepting bags at the transfer station on Wednesday, their regular time?
Action items. Did we get a new version of the action items?
No, I didn't see it either.
The action items in the packet are from May.
It was not an updated.
I'm looking at it online right now. Yeah.
Oh, I must have grabbed the wrong, I must have printed one and I grabbed the wrong. But the one online is fine?
Yes. That is really weird, so. For today, we originally had a discussion on, an update on Newport Park parking. I think, it says owner John.
Yes.
A short-term bylaw, review or proposed bylaw. So, we're gonna get that on the agenda at some point. Roles and responsibilities for downtown improvement, which we do have on the agenda. MBTA three A task force dissolution, we have that on the agenda. And that was it for today. So, the two things that we're missing from the agenda are the Newport parking, Newport park. Parking and short-term bylaw, short-term, yeah, short-term rental bylaw.
And, and. Given that Tony is coming up to speed. The Newport thing is a little complicated and we need a lot of thought on the short-term rental.
Right, I think what would be helpful though is. A discussion on how we want to proceed so we can maybe give Tony some guidance. When we left off with Greg, we talked about some other towns that had some interesting recent. Adaptations like Province Town was one. Greg had mentioned another one and I just don't remember.
Which was a much bigger cat.
I don't remember. Province Town was the one I had brought to his attention, but I don't remember what the other one was. Because we have a lot of short-term rentals on. Airbnb's or whatever and we're not managing them at all right now.
Supposed to be licensed. If they're six days or less. The state uses thirty days as a short-term. And we think we should be closer to the thirty days. And there's. A slight remnant of family compounds. Where. Great grandfather built the place and now we're at all second cousins and kind of keeping it going. And I think we don't want to discourage that. But we don't want. All of our housing turned into.
Short-term rentals, right, right. Well, I had the pleasure of going through this process in the hot. We had a. It started with a town meeting, town meeting action to adopt the local hotels tax. And to create a short-term rental bylaw advisory committee. That lasted a little bit over a year and then they proposed a. It was a zoning and a general bylaw at town meeting. And then, once that was approved. Worked through the process of the board, the select board establishing a rules regulations. In accordance with the bylaws that were passed. You know, we went with twenty-eight days because of February. But the. The building code is a big piece of it, especially now new building code and depending on the number of bedrooms that you have and. Certain type of safety requirements that are required, that becomes a part of the subject. But safety was a, was a big element of it for us. You know, you have. Oftentimes, it's someone who's not familiar with the property that they're renting and God forbid there was any sort of emergency, they're not. Right, or even how to get out or, or even. If they're not the main person. Renting the property, they might not even know the address, you know? So, if they have to call for help. Another thing is, you know, ensuring that the person who's, you know, really it comes down to. Good management of it and making sure that the place is safe, that the, that the manager's being responsive to any issues that are coming up. You know, neighborhood. Impact was a big element of that too.
Oh, could you? Distribute to all of us, the bylaw, the zoning and the regulations?
You can just take that in Taylor twenties.
S slash Manchester.
We've got starting point, you know, these other towns have already done.
Great. Is that it for action items?
Oh, the parking Newport Park.
I can report on that now or liaison, but why don't I just report on that right now? The DPW is, is, you know, moved around where these parking slots were for people who want to access. A powderhouse hill, they've been moved about fifty yards from where they initially had thought. They have a plot plan as to how that would work. And right now that sits with the. With the housing authority. And the housing authorities. Director, executive director recently retired or left, et cetera. They found a new person from Gloucester. Whom they like, or at least I spoke one of the, one of the trustees. And he said, yeah, she seems like a pretty good person. I think she's only started like two or three weeks ago. So, this plan has been sitting with them for a month and I'm not saying this is the most. High priority item for her, but she's got to get to it, but that's where it stands. I think that the DPW has been waiting for them to get back. Now for probably about three weeks.
How many spots are there?
Two. Just two. But they were going to be right at the end at the entrance and I don't, it'd be kind of no Newport Parks layout. And they were going to be right at the entrance where you walk up the hill and it's access for trucks and cars, et cetera, needed. And now it's going to be really opposite the little circle of the rotary. There is space directly behind that. It's within twenty-five, thirty yards at the entrance. Depends whose dog you're talking about.
So, we go on to the regular agenda. The first item is the committee interview with James Hoffman. Yes, that will be you. We've, we've read your application. I would like to hear you. Explain for a couple of minutes what you think you would, you would bring to the Conservation Commission and. You know, the usual question is, do you have enough time to do this?
Yeah, sure. Happy to do that, so. I've moved to, my family, my wife and I moved to Manchester by the Sea just about two years ago. We lived in Wellesley for twenty years. And then moved out to California, Monterey Peninsula for five years and then. Moved back a few years ago and lived on Sommel Circle and then built a house on Eaglehead. Just finished and. We're both from Wisconsin originally. And I worked at Wellington Management in Boston my whole, my whole career, but I've retired from there. I have agribusiness still on the West Coast. But I definitely have the time and the interest in serving on the commission. I was introduced to the idea. By another resident who, who definitely felt that free time. And the capacity and the skills to, to serve and. I do have a passion for conservation property. The farm. That I have has about twenty-five acres of. Of mixed woodlands on the Willamette River and I farmed most of the farm organically. And have done some innovative things on introducing pollinators to. Commercial farming to increase. Natural pollination for blueberries, which is one of the crops I grow. And. Have joined the Xerces Society, which is about pollinators. And so, it's, it's been a passion of mine and. So, when I thought about how I could help out the town. That was a big element for me. My, my career has been in real estate, so the other side of the perspective. I'm pretty familiar with commercial real estate, all property types and. I've worked with a lot of developers. I'm on the investor side, so. You know, we view, on the investor side, if you glasses half empty and the developer is always. At full and you're kind of always trying to meet in the middle and adjust for risk and, and see things. Happen in an economic and productive way, but. Kind of protecting the capital and the, and the risk, so I, I do have kind of a, I, I think it's about. Process and, and you know, what the rules are and making sure they're equitably applied, but in this. Case in the Conservation Commission, there's the overriding principle of protecting water and protecting the resources, which I think. Everybody in Manchester by the Sea really respects. That's why, that's why we're here. That's why we were drawn to the area. And it's kind of the. Brown jewel of the community, the water outside our window, the streams and. So, you know, I think I can, I can contribute. I met a few people on the committee and went on one of their field trips already and. Seemed like a good group that, that I could, I could work with and. So, that's kind of my story.
Yes, any questions?
No, it sounds like he's very qualified and thank you for stepping up.
And so you met with Steve?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good.
I don't know what Steve thought, but he's.
We haven't heard from him, so I guess that's a good thing.
He lets you know.
No, I just, I agree and I, I like the. Two sides to the coin, you know, you can look at these applications that come before you, those. Two different perspectives, the real estate side and the anti-funkish side, so I, I'd like that quite a bit, so thank you.
Can I just ask?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Mass, pass a lot faster along. You'll be able to get up to speed on that.
I, you know, I think it's going to be a learning curve. I mean, there's, I think anyone who's. Yeah, I mean, I've had to deal with things like asbestos and everything else that you, you, you do have to kind of. Look to. The engineers and some of the consultants to tell you exactly what the law is and not your reaction to something. And then, you know, seek to read it three times, but it's ever-changing, but those are the kinds of things, you know. In, in the securities business too, you know, you're heavily regulated. You've got to take the pains to understand what the rules are. Follow the rules.
Yeah. No, Jim, your avocation and vocational background, I think you are very good fits. Time is a factor here. I know that the Conservation Commission gets thicker packets. That they have to look at before every meeting, more than any other committee. A lot of drawings and background and that sort of thing, so there's a lot of reading that goes into all of that.
I paid for one of those. That's their whole meeting where they went through five of them and it's, that was daunting, that. That's why I've been here for a year and a half.
Know what's going on with all of that.
I think, I think I saw one of the things on your agenda item about the virtual versus in-person and. I, I think you get more attendance by people being a patch in and some of those meetings can go pretty long. There's a lot of info that you want to be able to. Have a few times to look at it and load it up. See what you've got. And that helps them.
Well, it's good that you not only attended the meeting, but also field trips, which are fairly common. On that particular committee, so. Thanks for volunteering.
I can hold a second, everyone's, thank you for volunteering. I think you would be great in the mission.
Thank you.
Ready for motion?
Yes.
To move the board appoint James Hoffman as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Further discussion? John?
Yes.
Anne says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm impressed that you came to the commission after having been on the other side of the desk.
Thank you.
Okay. The next candidate is Brendan Lampier. Okay. Parks and Rec.
I recently got into coaching and so we've been using the facilities a lot. I coached the winter basketball. Travel team out of Y, I've done some other things. I grew up here, so I was coach field playground. I was like. My grandparents, my great-grandparents, all sorts of things. My mom was, you know, the same. If my kids would have been, if COVID didn't cancel a year, my kids, me and my mom, all would have gone to the same elementary. So, it's, so I have a long history in the town. I'm very impressed with what they've done. Like as, as, as their program has evolved since I was a kid and I was here. I'm not someone who looks to change anything. I teach, I facilitate EQ stuff for my company, like I work for a large Fortune five or company. It's something I enjoy doing. I don't, I'm measured in my decision, you know, I try to see very much. You know, gather the facts before you make anything and I, and I'm. I, I'm not looking to shake the world, I'm looking to support the people that are already in play. And I, I think it's a good program and I'm just happy to do something. And I have a ten and twelve-year-old, so they're going with their girls, which. Think about it, when I was a child, no girls program, nothing like that, right? And coaching girls basketball has been kind of eye-opening to how like they can be what, you know what I mean? They, they get to. Go through that same thing because I think it was only softball, you know what I mean? And now I'm very, I'm happy to see it, especially because of my only interest, I have girls, so I have to be in that situation. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, look, your background and you certainly know what's going on here. Can we assume that you know all of the folks that are on the Park and Rec committee and. You're familiar with the programs? You did say you're an emotional intelligence expert.
Only if you can calm down. And realize it and gather all the information before you hit the ball back.
A lot of contingencies there. Alright, so, is this your first committee?
Uh, yes, I have volunteered before and I can, especially was like, I, I thought I liked the process, it was okay and then. She kind of, at, at the meeting was really, one of the people like, thank you for even coming up and asking and. It, it might have not been in my wheelhouse and that might have been the thing.
No, no, I mean, your kids are, would you say ten and twelve? That's an age, age where I say, I got a little bit of my time back, maybe I can do something. And so, that's, that's great, so thanks for volunteering.
Well-qualified. Thank you for stepping up, really. No questions.
Brian?
I'm still amputated by an emotional intelligence disorder. I've had Brandon on the basketball court. You know, so I've known him for a while.
I'm not a yeller, right?
No, no, because you seem to have contained your emotional.
I mean, I've known Brandon forever, so. Yeah, he's definitely a team player. We've worked together on all kinds of stuff, so any, any. Board would be lucky to have.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay. Thank you, ready for motion? Yes, I moved at the board appoint Brandon Lampier as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. For a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I think. There being said that Miranda.
Yep.
Will be.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay, the next question is the water and sewer bill abatement for Mr. Jewell at five Jeffrey Court. Is he?
I don't know, let me see if he's online.
Sorry about that.
Here you are.
Here I am. So, having not approached the. The select board before, from this path anyway. I'm not quite sure the best way to start. Do you have any background on this at all at this point?
We have something in our packets. From, I assume, Tony and Chuck. And we have your original letter.
Okay.
I guess.
Go ahead.
Tony, why don't you explain what the, your, the approach that you would take?
Well, so, the, there is a. Am I, is it Jewel, Mr. Jewel?
Dick is just fine.
Alright, so, the residents did experience a spike in usage in their last bill compared to. The same bill cycle for a five-year average. Where typically, they were seeing around fifteen hundred cubic feet and this past. Cycle, it was around twenty-four hundred cubic feet. So, there certainly was a spike. It was an actual read, so it's an estimated amount of consumption. Mr. Jewel reached out to our DPW department to seek an abatement. Typically, you know, for the town, from the town's perspective, we want to see a resolution to. Whatever caused that spike in usage before we provide an abatement. So that it doesn't continue to occur. You know, many times we have to explain to the resident that, you know, if you find a leak and fix it, that actually is a good thing. For us, it shows us that the problem is fixed and we're happy to do the abatement. I know Mr. Jewel was provided tabs, blue tabs that'll help detect if there's a leak with a toilet. But there could be a leak somewhere else, so I don't believe unless. Mr. Jewel has different information. I don't believe a plumber has gone out to see if there's any leak in his system. I would like to see a plumber, you know, take a look at it, at the home and make sure that. The issue is resolved. And we also have. We could also, now that the new meters are in stock, which wasn't the case, I think, when this officially. Originally came to our attention, we could put a new meter in there to get a better. You know, day-to-day read to understand. That as well.
Okay, so.
So, the, I, I will fill in a little bit and that is, you know, unfortunately, we, we don't have anything to show. Why it might have happened, you know, other than sharing in good faith that we've been. You know, for the past thirty years consistently using about the same amount of water. We tried, we did the di-tab test and nothing was there. We looked at all of the connections in the house in terms both inside and outside, though we do have two meters. One for the in, one for the out. And saw no evidence of any place that there would be, quote, a leak. That would account for almost doubling from the low end. Our usage during that period of time. So, I feel like I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I don't have a, an ability to say, oh, that was the reason why. You know? We just don't have that.
So typically, you know, meters, a meter's gonna, on an actual read, a meter's not gonna run unless water actually passes through it. It's possible that the meter needs to be calibrated. We would. We're coming up, I think, to the next quarter of reads, so that may confirm an issue. But as of right now. You know, there's no, there's no. Evidence of an issue that led to the high use that's been resolved.
I assume that the bill differentiates between the indoor use and the outdoor use.
Yes, it's actually a separate bill for the in.
So, the. And the, the excess was on the indoor use?
Correct. The only other, the other thought that came to mind, the first thought that came to mind was what were the dirty water incidences? In that period of time. I couldn't remember and I asked DPW, I mean, the water department. And they did not recall that because I know when there's dirty water, we. Run to get the dirt out of the street by. Sometimes we just run the outside, but sometimes it gets into the inside, we run the inside, but I don't remember that happening.
No, and I don't, I asked, I asked too, I don't think that there was any other. Uh, households in this area that experienced a spike in use, which would have. Likely indicated that we asked people to run the water.
Right.
So, so would a good first step be to get the new meters installed in Mr. Jewel's? Property?
Yep. I think that's something, that would, that would be a good way to see.
So, there was, there was a suggestion on the floor and I, I don't recall where it came from in terms of a plumbing, a plumber taking a look. Uh, at our systems to find out, uh, if indeed there is a leak. That's an expense that we would incur and, um, we're both retired and, anyway. I'm not quite sure what that's going to tell us, that we didn't already determine ourselves, but I'm not a plumber. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think that we're not opposed to the abatement, we just want to find out, we're not going to be given quarterly abatements.
Right.
Right.
I, I understand.
You've obviously discussed this with the DPW, when they have folks that have problems like this that come to them from time to time. We don't see most of them, to be honest, that kind of resolve there. So how, how did, how did, how was it left with Chuck and Nate and Sue?
Well, I, I spoke directly with Sue from the beginning, right when we first got the bill. And raised the issue with her and she looked and said, you, you're right, that is quite different from all the ones from before. And, um, then she brought that, uh, and I said, well, you know, how do we go about an abatement? And she said, I'll need to talk to Chuck about that, and she got back to me and said, um. That we would need to present this to you folks. For resolution. That they, they, she didn't say why they couldn't do anything, they, they just said that our next step was to approach the select board, so. Here we are.
That occurred before I was.
Yep.
In the future, I would. Hopefully come up with a resolution before it comes to your attention, but I do think, you know, we can certainly. Read his existing meter, add, put in a new meter, but, you know, and I, I think it's. We all understand that the, the abatement process usually is, you know, tied to a resolution, so. Let's see if we can investigate a little bit better, these old, older meters, it's really hard to know without that daily consumption data.
Yeah.
What occurred?
And, and the new meters will give you basically hour by hour. Still running at two in the morning.
Right, right. Uh, so, that would be my suggestion is, uh. Let's investigate it further by either reading the current meter again or installing a new meter. And then I'll work with Chuck on, you know, processing.
I get a plumber in there somehow.
Something could have been left on and now it's off.
We have no problem, I tell you, with the abatement. But let's get the new meter replaced to make sure that we're not going to be doing this again.
Right.
And then we can address, uh, you know, that last quarter. The way I feel.
Okay, so not offer an abatement immediately, but. Change, change the meter as quickly as possible, monitor the usage. Um, and if there is continuous use. Then I think they need to get, they need to get a plumber.
So, and then additionally, what I would recommend to Mr. Jewel is to, if he hasn't yet, to pay the bill. And then the abatement will basically be a credit towards a future bill. Because the longer that bill is outstanding, it grows interest, so it's better to pay it. And then go through the process of the abatement, and if it's approved, it would be provided in the, in the form of a credit.
Okay, I understand, at the time, uh, when I was speaking with Sue Taylor. Uh, I, I raised the issue of the bill being due shortly. And she said, well, don't worry about that, we will go through the process and then we'll address that. But based on what you have said, I mean, we paid for the outside service bill, which was pennies, well, not pennies, but. Compared to this bill.
Winter quarter, nothing going on.
You got it, well, I think we paid for a meter and seven dollars of water, I don't know. The tail of the winter quarter.
Now.
Alright, so I'll follow up with Mr. Jewel and Chuck.
Okay, and, and, um, I didn't see, I heard the voice, but I didn't see who was talking and who?
Tony.
Oh, Tony, I have not met you, only seen you, heard about you.
Yep, well, well, I'm heavier contact with, uh, I'll get your contact information from the DPW, we'll connect.
Okay, it is, all of that is in the copy of my original letter to Greg.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
I will, I, I will just wait for the next, uh, communication to me and then we'll move, we'll take our steps.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
The next item is a very small one, um. Chuck has sent a letter to the state, um, recommending a potential by, potential law that will. I think break up the drought measurement. From all of Essex County to individual water. Management groups and I think that's a good thing and we should, the, 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 the select board should also send a letter. That's neat, um, I moved it to select board, sign a letter supporting House Bill N eighteen.
Second.
Discussion, John.
Yes.
Yeah, it says, yes.
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 Do you happen to have a copy of that letter? Okay, roles and responsibilities for the Downtown Improvement Planning Committee on Downtown Revitalization.
Yes, I asked that this agenda item be put on, it's actually currently the Downtown Improvement Projects Committee, but. After we have our discussion on roles and responsibility, we have a proposed rebranding of the committee itself. Um, so basically, you know, with all of the discussion on the downtown revitalization. We just wanted to make sure everybody understands what the planning board responsibility is, what the select board responsibility is, and what the downtown improvement. Projects Committee is responsible for, they were originally chartered as more of a beautification committee for the downtown. But in recent months, probably six months to a year or so, they really pivoted and tried to work with businesses to. Help our downtown be healthy for the business community, so I would like, with your permission, manager. Like Steve Carhart to kind of familiarize the board with what they're doing and what they would like to continue to do. Which might be slightly different than their current charter.
Yeah, yes, thanks very much, um, yeah, this, uh, we started, of course, with the project and we have continued to. Move forward the project, uh, we've been working with DPW to provide a very detailed plan, which we briefed to the board. About a year and a half ago, if I recall correctly. We have, at the request of, uh, successive chairs, uh, become involved with a number of other things. Uh, for instance, we were very much involved with the complete streets projects, trying to give public outreach. Feedback, finer detail refinements, uh, we have been involved in, uh, working on, uh, increasing parking. Uh, enforcement, uh, to help businesses have turnover in front of their, their, uh, facilities. Uh, we've worked on getting, uh, public restrooms, uh, we've worked on improving signage and wayfinding. Uh, we're trying to find, to, to find a sweet spot between, uh, being totally collegial and also being insistent enough that. That, uh, the elected leaders and the municipal employees understand that these kinds of things are important. Uh, more recently, we have been invited to have members on the resilience task force. And on the, and on the, um, MBTA zoning task force. Uh, where we had someone who was reflective of our concerns on each of those and also, uh, in, in the reporting process. Uh, we were able to hear feedback and, and have some consistent input. Uh, we have also, uh, always had the, uh, town planner and the DPW staff. Attending our meetings and particularly most recently Kathy has been, let's go back about a year, a year and a half to. The, um, the establishment new liaison process with the select board, which has been wonderful, like. Afraid I drove Becky Chase crazy on some of the parking stuff a long time ago, it's much better. Uh, most recently, uh, we've noted all of the, of the, uh. Uh, town issues around the vitality of, of downtown. And, uh, again, staying in touch with this board through Kathy primarily. Uh, and also in touch with the planning board through our, uh, joint colleague here, Gordon Brewster. And I also met briefly with, uh, Sarah Creighton, uh, we identified a role that we could adopt would be to. Uh, market downtown Manchester as, as a place for small business. Uh, and this would be, I have two staffs, this is what we're doing, uh, in cooperation with the chamber. And our good friend Jim Brown, who is a former member of the committee and is chair, president of the chamber this year. Uh, what we are doing is we're having a marketing program for commercial realtors, which makes the case that Manchester. Is an attractive business opportunity for small businesses. Um, and so that, put that out to realtors that deal in commercial space here in town. And also in parallel to that, we're going to have a curated incubation program to identify. Small businesses that you might attract or entice to town. And those would, would fall under, you would be in such a brainstorm, I just can't suppose might be. And we think it's very important that they be four season businesses, so whatever the, uh, visitors are in summer, that's just. Uh, cherry on the top, gotta be four season businesses, they've got to be able to make it with local clientele only. Uh, we've got to have no direct competition for whatever they're doing in town. And they need to be conscious of the fact that, um, there is a, that the folks in town are most are, uh, almost entirely families. Nesters, there are almost no singles between twenty and forty, so they've, uh, so they've, they've got to see that that's where their, their sweet spot is. We have identified six or eight possible, um, uh, businesses like that. Uh, perhaps an Asian takeout, uh, perhaps youth, uh, children's consignment shop, perhaps a. Uh, computer repair and, and basic supply shop, variety of things like that, and we're working to move forward with that. Uh, this has been, as, as I mentioned earlier, we've been in touch with Kathy to be sure we're not getting in the way of, of, of. Anything that we shouldn't be doing, and, uh, we were talking to Gordon and Sarah, uh, and, and also, uh, Kathy McCabe, who was. Uh, for, uh, to, as a consultant on their project, was very clear that the lane we're in. Is if there's empty space out there in town, we're working on killing it. And, but we are not involved, uh, in the longer term, uh, planning process for what the broader, uh, strategic. Charity of town might be, yeah, so that's, so, but so our, our immediate concern is just be sure that. Space is filled, if we can do anything to help that. And, uh, there's, there's a concept called the Business Improvement District, which is a legal thing in the state. Uh, which involves putting taxes on local, um, businesses to support marketing and things like that. What we are doing is a volunteer business improvement district. Uh, if, oh, conceptually, that's what we're doing, but we're not talking about any taxes or anything like that, we're doing it on a volunteer basis. And see what we can do and, and, and vote for doing it. Uh, so that's, uh, that's, uh, uh, my short report. I'm joined here by, uh, a large chunk of our merry band, Gordon Brewster, uh, Gar, Gar Morse. Uh, Marlene Dolan is on the screen, I think that's it. So, uh, we've got a lot of enthusiasm and we, we are very pleased for, uh. Uh, for the opportunities to, uh, work on these issues and, uh, we welcome your guidance and feedback and. Uh, conversation on this.
Hey, Steve. Before, um, before we move on. Um, is it important for us to, um, make clear that by. From the original design of our committee, it was the fact that we are, uh, not a decision making body. We are an advisory body and a pair of hands for the board.
Yeah, yeah.
So if I, if I, um, based on my attendance at the meetings over the past year and a half, but I. I feel that they were focused very much, like I said, on the beautification of the downtown, making it a welcoming environment. They were able to implement some projects, you know, on Summer Street, um, but a lot of the beautification effort has been put on hold. Because of the Culver project, okay, so it's not, I, I think they're still an important committee to, to help with. To continue to help with the beautification of the downtown, yes, but that is post Culver project. A lot of that has been postponed, so they, they still have some parts of their downtown improvement committee. Um, strategy that we had all viewed and, and said we agreed with. And the budget submissions for that might appear in the next go round for the fiscal budget, right, for the fiscal, the next fiscal year.
Yeah, there are different, I mean, there are different pieces of it.
Right.
And, uh, we identified the Elm Street to School Street, uh, segment as the highest value and least. Uh, upfront cost to start with, and this has been working with DPW and Kathy's been in all these discussions and, and DPW. Has advised us that, that if they can make it adjacent to a project they're already doing. Then they can get bids and planning and things like that done, or less than the cost to do the project on a car.
Right, so, so for example, the Culver project is going to rip up the downtown, right? When we put it back together, let's follow the plan that we all agree to, right? That, that's kind of the, the modus operandi here, so in the meantime, while their beautification projects are a little bit on hold. They, um, have been, you know, Steve has been attending the chamber meetings and listening to the business community and he brought back to this committee. You know, thoughts and everybody said, well, what can we do to help them and what can we do to help the downtown? So I see their committee is kind of being twofold right now, it's, it's still very much important that they be involved in the beautification, but that's kind of. On hold a little bit, so they've expanded their purview into helping the business community. That question here is, are we all okay with that, what they're doing, or do we want to put any boundaries around that? Um, and I think the, uh, the only other thing I mentioned, Steve, is that you and I attended the, oh, what was that event in Gloucester? The, um, economic, um.
Right, there was a lot of the.
There was an economic, uh, meeting in Gloucester with some of the state representatives there, and they made us aware of. Programs that we could tap to get funding for things that we were not aware of and, and to help the business community, so. I think it makes sense for some entity in town to be focused on that, perhaps getting some of the funding that's available. Cities, I guess, have a district manager to manage their downtowns, um, what we've heard, but we don't have anything like that, so. In the absence of that, I, I don't have a, an issue with their expanded scope, but I thought it was important we bring it here and discuss it.
Is there a charter?
Should be on the website.
I think it predates my involvement, I think goes back to.
Yeah, is, is, is that you find that charter and offer us. An expanded version that covers, so that we have, so that we're tracking what's going on.
I just tried to things going on, right, you know, uh, a year and a half ago, we saw, we'll commit to be great renderings. The, the, you have the perception of the downtown as an input, right? And I understand that we're waiting on the culvert, but does that impact work on Summer Street? And Down Beach Street, where the improved, uh, crosswalks were going and the fencing. And, I mean, it's a chicken and egg kind of thing, do you want to, uh, you want to entice businesses? Okay, but beautification and, okay. Uh, so I, I just think that.
So I think.
There's too many, I think.
There are a lot of moving parts.
Lot of parts, and I like to think I can wrap my head a lot, a lot of moving parts, but there's just. I'm hearing a lot of moving parts, but I'm not seeing any action going on.
So that's the, that's the issue, and that, I think, Tony, you want to, you'll want to get engaged here to understand the scope. Cause one of the, one of their projects that did reach down into Beach Street, okay? Well, DPW said, hey, we're going to be digging up that street for water and sewer pipes. Yeah, it happened, so with the, the approach that the committee has taken is to follow the DPW. Rather than try to drive.
We talked about, was it White House, whatever, like a, like a.
If I made it also a funding issue, and I have been following along with Senator Tar's office to try to get. Uh, there was a thing called Mass Leads that came through, trying to get a grant for that. And the, the first tranche of, of the, uh, project. And the, the first tranche of of the project itself is in the twenty seven capital budget as a grant. As I'm sure the board is aware, the status of state budget is kind of up in the air. Greg Fetterschmidt mentioned to me that that he had been in touch with Senator Tarr's office. And there was a small earmark in the last budget for that. Whether, where that stands, I don't know, and I guess Tony would have to follow up on that. But that is not, I've had trouble getting that together. There's also the issue, it seems obvious to me that the CPA would cover the, the restoration of historically current streetlights as part of this. I talked to CPA, they were reluctant because that was not actually restoring a historic streetlight, it was putting in a replica. I don't know whether that's the final word on that. But I've been going around with that. I also, it seems to me that some of the, of the, of the town's ongoing budget should go to the most visible, most highly trafficked, most commercially sensitive part of our infrastructure. No disparagement to other streets or 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 sidewalks or neighborhoods. But it seems to me that 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 needs to stand forward and it's kind of our lane to stand forward and say, look, this is what we think we ought to, we ought to be doing. So with that said, I know Gordon Brewster had a few couple of, Gordon sounds like the planning board, you know.
I can't, I can't speak for the planning board, but I can speak on relationship to what we just talked about, our planning board meeting. Where we actually planned our next, you know, little breathing room right now. So we've actually planned our next year, year of what we're going to be talking about. Also talking about working with the downtown improvement, and I, I'd like to say that we have been working, or Steve has been working. And the whole downtown improvement is working very cooperatively with the planning board. Matter of fact, Sarah and I and Steve had a little informal meeting down by the oceanfront and just just chatted about this stuff. About what we may do, what they may do and everything. And personally, I find it, I find it quite gratifying that there's another, another entity in town is thinking about a component of what we're doing. And so that's, that's a big deal. But I would like to say just briefly, that the agenda for the planning board is coming here encompasses all the things that Steve just mentioned, the aesthetics of what the, the infrastructure, the idea of the discussion that we've been talking about in downtown improvement, is parking, is signage, as Marlene has done such a great job on. So it's, it's all part and parcel to the larger whole. And we certainly understand it and we are, because I'm on both committees, I sit on both committees here. I understand what's going on, Steve, on the relationship to the planning board. So finally, I think we have a very good synergy going on as to what could be done for the best of the town.
So I, I like Anne's suggestion, the next step might be just to have you propose a charter, perhaps discuss it with, you know, Gordon and the planning board first, right? Make sure you guys are clear on what that should be and include in that the rebranding of your committee. How you guys should rebrand the committee and then bring that to us.
And I, I would, I would probably expand that a little bit. I was just looking at all the membership. Everybody's term here expires in two thousand twenty seven, or was that at default because nobody gave them any times or what?
That's default because I, I, I think that we were told everything was going to, as I like to call it. Everything was going to be a one year term and then we upped it, we chose.
That seems strange to me. It does say three year term on top on, in our.
That you changed it at a meeting.
Changed what, one year to three year?
Yeah.
But everybody's got the same term?
Who can stagger it the following year, that when twenty seven comes up and then stagger it, you guys.
Well, I think you probably put that down there, I think we ought to probably get that arranged.
Get arranged.
And more to the point, perhaps, there's a lot of interaction here with the planning board. I, you've already got a member of the planning board on your board, on your committee. I would make that kind of a, you've got to have somebody from the planning board on your group, because it seems to me that's a strong interface. And if you've got another committee or board that you think you should probably have a member to, because what you're doing, you always got to have answers to. That would be a good idea. And obviously, the DPW, which you said you're following around, but they're following you around, one or the other. They're ex officio, but they need to be part.
To that point, what I'd like to see is some bullet points exactly, and some kind of then, once you set bullet points, a phasing, a plan of phase. Okay, what section of town we're going to, we're looking at first as it follows, and that's something you'll look at to us with the DPW. But, you know, quadrants and this is, you know, A, B, C, and D. Ultimately, it's going to, you know, the, the ultimate goal is to get here, but I'd like to see, I'd have benchmarks and goals as to where we want to get to.
Our own committee should have that, absolutely. So I think to Anne's point, first step might be codifying the new charter, the enhanced charter. And then, just like the planning board did, they've outlined, you know, their sequence of events, what they're going to be working on and and, and you have a clear scope, though, you know what's, what constitutes the downtown. So that was what, from Tappan Street to, or Elm Street, I forget.
Yeah, I mean, what, what we're doing is kind of thrown like topics, we've tried, done our best to try to meet the needs as they evolve and stay in touch with everybody else that's concerned. So we're not out in left field someplace doing something that is not connected. And and I can't say enough about having Kathy as as official liaison. So when we meet, Kathy is there and Chuck or Nate is there. Mark Resnick is there, Gordon is there, along with members and of other members of the committee and various members of public, including folks from the chamber. Usually the, the historical museum and interested members of the public. So that's, you know, we're trying to be as, as connected as we possibly can be.
For me, also, I mean, especially expand what is downtown. The landlord, this is for me, is is quite bullish on the fact that he thinks a year from now he'll have all his retail full. Okay, which then I think will help drive along the business on this way too. And that's something that, I mean, right now, you can shoot a cannon off down Central Street and hit anything. Okay, so I think that, so I think that.
Crossing that street's pretty nasty, so I don't know if I agree with that.
So I think that as we look, you know, a lot of the work might be done for us, okay?
Hey, I'm a big believer in what the private sector can do. And I was explaining to Kathy earlier that, from my perspective at least, I know there's some alarmism about the decline of, of downtown. I think the alarmism is overdone, because I see things moving in like a new bank down at the Harpers Point and the new wine shop and the Cafe Nero and the two new storefronts across the street.
And I know that the landlord would much prefer have, which is great, oh, by the way, much prefer have retail as opposed to office space.
Yes, yes.
Low insurance moved out because ultimately the goal is to put retail there.
Yes.
Okay, I know that, I'm fairly certain that when the rent, when the lease is over, at William Ravis, retail will be going in there.
Yeah, yeah, so we're trying to, be, we're, we're, we're not alarmist, but I don't want to take anything for granted. I think there are enough signs of the general economic situation maybe getting more difficult.
That's different, I mean, it's, it's evolving, retail is evolving. And whether or not, where it's going, if you, if you could have that, you can make a lot of money. I mean, the death of retail happened, downtown retail started in the sixties with shopping malls.
Yeah.
And mass exit is downtown, so that's what was battling now, and now we're battling Amazon and the internet.
I think, I think it's a blessing that there are investors that are willing to put money into town. That would be more worrisome if that were not the case, but from, from my perspective, we can't take anything for granted. We need to be proactive in nourishing businesses that can make it here.
It, it, it seems to me you've outlined two quite different programs that you're doing. One of them being the contacting the commercial real estate people and and generally marketing downtown. And the other is your, your effort at, at beautification, frankly. And that, the beautification part is where we want to know, we're going to do this piece, we're going to do that piece, and.
I think it's an infrastructure that's, to me, I think if you build it, they will come.
I, I, I think throughout there, you keep on saying beautification, I think it's really beautification and infrastructure, as you're saying. So it's, our, our original plan, concept was to make streets better for people walking. You know, hopefully, if people, more people are walking, then more people would want to have businesses here because people are walking around town. So, but it's also beautiful, but it's kind of making the streets more manageable for pedestrians and bicyclists and all those type of things as well. Yeah, and I would make it more vibrant. If I were, yeah, and when we're talking about going to high quality, consistent concrete sidewalks downtown. We're getting rid of the lumpy, bituminous, uneven stuff that is out there. And and the maintenance of the high quality concretes sidewalks, such as down near the, the beach and and Summer Street intersection and that, the original thing, those were done in like two thousand eight, look, they're, they're still there and nothing, you know, they're, they're in perfect shape. And with the high visibility, high traffic part of downtown, it's investing in a quality and sustainable and less maintenance requiring basis. Whereas in, in the more distant neighborhoods where that are used, where the traffic is less and they're not, they're not so central to the the visibility of the community, you know, less expensive methods are, are appropriate. We're going to reduce maintenance by doing this as well. So it's, it's beautification, but it's more than beautification, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Um, Steve and and team, I, I, Marlene here, Dolan, Nineteen Woodcrest Road. I also wanted to mention, and again, we're happy to be boxed into a smaller box if need be or rolled into another committee if we're getting in the way. But the thing we learned from working with our downtown businesses on the signage project was people really don't know where the beach is, they don't know where to get a restroom, they don't know, they don't know where to go, and thus the signage project came up. And it was thanks to Kathy and our ideation that we got some relief for downtown businesses in the plaza on their water bill to allow people to use their restrooms. And so that whole idea is about how do we make it more friendly and more welcoming to our tourists who come in and spend money here?
We're helping the population out.
Yeah. Half the population they move out. So I think, I think there's a lot of, of, you know, like we, when we had the planning board effort of the ideation around downtown, there are a lot of moving parts. And, you know, some of it's in the purview of the planning board, some of the select board. And this committee could be the linchpin that kind of ties things together. Because actually, you forgot to mention, the Chamber of Commerce also attends your meetings now.
Yes.
They found it value added, so they self-invited themselves and and we said, fine. Because you, you want to hear not just from the residents, but the businesses, there's got to be a balance.
In a sense, you're a local Chamber of Commerce.
Well, we are, I would, I would like to say, my experience has been that the folks in town now, by and large, are very, very, very busy keeping the day to day business of the town going. And the folks that run our businesses and merchants are very, very busy just keeping their business going. And I'd like to imagine that we're kind of the grease and the glue that keeps Town Hall and Main Street together and moving roughly in the same direction. So we, I mean, our business try to
communicate the best we can.
Seems like a good fit, I'd like to see it described in a little more detail. Certainly, and I think to Brian's point, after the conceptual, a list of, of projects, both in the marketing side and in the, and in the infrastructures. Can we work with somebody on the planning board to develop that? So that.
If I may, Marlene, just to say, everything we just talked about here, what you've just talked about is exactly the same stuff we're discussing with the planning board. And to Brian's point about scheduling, so I spent, I had a thirty year career in the architectural engineering business, building buildings. So planning and design, construction, sequencing, that, 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 is all vitally important to me. And that's something that I will take on with my personal purview too. Here, I've also, I just found out the other day that I'm on the facilities committee with the DPW. We're all planning of new buildings and stuff coming out. So, so we ain't got to do it.
Right.
No, again, so you know how important it is to go to.
It's the only thing that's important, and again, basically, plan it out. And not that it falls according to plan, but the.
I want to know if, you know, if it doesn't fall according to plan, I want to know if we missed something. Okay, and that's, that's important. Okay, I'm good.
Fine, I just think, oh, you're not making any kind of motion here, are you?
No, that's going to come back.
No, that's, that's fine, but I would say you got to have a planning board person on your committee. Well, and he's, he's here right now, and I think
As part of your charter.
Coincidental he's here, but I think it really needs part of the charter when I do that, like, like I had mentioned, who should be part of your committee?
Okay.
I mean, you're all at large right now.
Yeah, that's. And we're down one committee, one member, so if anybody knows of somebody good, that's willing to spend some time, some really, that's great.
Thank you.
And Kathy will report back to us.
Yep, I will.
I, I think I hear general acclamation for what you're doing.
Yep.
And for the importance that you're taking to it, so, thank you.
Our pleasure, Steve.
Thank you, good. Thanks for coming by.
I'll say general maintenance.
Can you wash my car?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the housing authority vacancy. And I don't know much about that.
It was basically just kind of, if I can speak, it was just basically to say, there's an opening because we haven't received anything. And the last time it was spoken at the meeting, it was barely addressed. So I just wanted to make it aware that there is an opening and I, because it was on the agenda, somebody actually hopefully be applying.
So somebody resigned, and that's an elected office?
Yes.
So because there's a vacancy, we have to appoint somebody to that slot until the next election? And then somebody has to get elected, so this person, whatever, is only there until next April?
Remember, yeah, that would be April.
If I may.
Okay, I, I have spoken to someone who's on the authority and a couple of weeks ago. And they've been looking around, they asked me, said, hey, you know anybody? I said, not offhand, but I think they are looking and.
Yeah.
So what is the specific, I think it would be helpful, because this is a, you know, an elected position. It might help to advertise this one differently or separately.
Yeah.
Because we, we normally have the announcements, hey, there's a bunch of openings, come volunteer for the town. This sounds like we need to advertise it separately with some specificity as to what type of
It might be what?
Set, we're looking for.
I'll talk to the authority, house authority. Yeah, but I think there's one person that's going to be sending me an email tomorrow because of being on here.
Wow, very efficient.
So that was it.
Great, liaison updates.
Ah, let's see, I think we covered the DPW stuff, at least that's hot, because we talked about trash, we talked about new port.
On the trash item, we, there's a reverse nine on one going out today. That if your trash wasn't picked up today, to have it on the curb by seven AM tomorrow to be collected. And when, and then Tuesday is going to be collected as well, so.
And that they'll go around all of those other routes that are Monday routes and.
Whatever wasn't.
Leave your trash, yes.
That's, that's trash or recycling also.
It says trash and recycling. So that's the information.
You got out there overnight.
All right, so, yeah, that's, that's the story of that. So DPW, I think those are the key issues, and I know that they're starting weaving on. Well, tomorrow, I think we're pleasant, pleasant street. Uh Historic District Commission, the uh twenty-two Union Street was approved by the uh Historic District Commission. That's meeting last Wednesday. And so there'll be two townhouses that will be going in in the cargo spot. Um I know they, I asked them about a timeline, they're still wrestling with all kinds of issues there, but they have. That uh that approval from the only commission from which they needed approval. So it's that's moving, moving ahead. Uh Council on Aging. A couple of things going on there. I think we all got a copy of the resignation of Nancy Hammond. Effective July.
Twenty fifth.
The twenty-fifth, okay, that's on your plate.
Retirement.
Yes.
Notice.
Oh yeah, right, retirement, that's resigned and retirement. So that will be a hole that needs to be filled, and I can tell you that the Friends of the Council on Aging are interested in. Having some input or knowing what's gonna happen with that. So that's involved, that's uh, what, have you got a timing on that at all, or?
Because I I, we just received the notice over the uh, you know, late last week. Uh I'd like to meet with the friends. Uh I haven't met with, I haven't met them yet, uh so I'd like to to meet with them and and.
Really, but we can do it next week or so, I I I can check in with you on that.
Yeah.
The only, the key sensitivity here, I suppose, is that there is a money raising initiative associated with the senior center. That will be launched in the fall. Uh somewhere in the early to mid September, and of course, that's a key person. And that initiative, so that has to be thought about in the context of the timing for that position. And uh Cape Ann Transit, we joined them, as you know, a few months or so ago, and they will start service with us on or about first of August. And uh the days that they will provide service here in uh Manchester will be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Their services run nine to three. Um the seniors just have to call and that's it and say. So long as we wanna go anywhere for any reason within the service area, which reaches to Danvers and Lingfield and south to Rowley to the north. Into the ocean everywhere else. So uh that'll that'll start on or about then, those three days. And we'll see how it complements our current band service here. And that has to get publicized, but CADA has had to do that with all of the other communities. Uh in the Cape Ann area, we in fact are the last one to join there, so they have some ideas about how to make that happen. And they say it takes about a year to a year and a half for things to get up to speed, people know what's going on. Those are the key things with the Council on Aging, that's it.
Sorry, from downtown improvement, and I have nothing on, but.
Uh Parks and Rec, a new number, uh I think the fourth one off. Very well, there was one issue that came up. Uh in fact, no one heard about it, means it was uh well handled, it was a water break. Uh Thursday night during the fonset. Uh and I think that Cheryl and I actually, I was with her. Checked it out, Cheryl, I thought the the spirit, the cooperation between three different departments, okay? Uh Cheryl got a hold of Chuck and Sean. And if you, there's that little speed bump on the uh End of B Street. As a result of a break in the water, and the water was just gushing out of the catch basin into the parking lot. And initial thought was that we do the the bathhouse and canteen would be without water till Monday. Uh yes, on the hottest weekend.
Yeah.
We're fine working having water. Uh and that was, uh they got together and kudo on, I mean. Uh Water Department, Parks and Rec, uh and DPW. They pretty much had it fixed, but the phone calls between Chuck, Todd Fitzgerald. And Cheryl didn't stop until it was all resolved that night. And then to uh DPW's credit, I was, I went and checked out the uh the fix on Friday morning before the parade. And not only was it the uh the speed bump and the temporary water was fixed up, but I saw a bathtub emptying the uh the dumpster. Ah, okay. It says that was the new problem with all.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you always hear when DPW doesn't do anything, but when they do do something, you don't hear about it, so I, so I think that uh. Not that, and um the fact that uh at eight o'clock at night. Todd was, uh Chief Fitzgerald was saying that he, the original thought was they'd be fixing it first thing on uh Fourth of July. And that there would be, he'd have a detail there while they were doing the work. They were able to fix it uh Thursday night. And but uh no, it was, it was impressive the way all three departments came together. And then everything else, the parade went off, and all the stuff that. Bicyclists riding up our butts.
Better than throw in front of us.
Yes.
Why? Next hit, they're going in front of us.
We have enough candy.
The candy was, uh the candy worked out very well. It was just about right. It was distributed appropriately by a four-year-old. Who knew how to do that.
Very well, just very well supervised.
Yes, that's correct. And the flags really were on the money. The biggest problem, of course, is that the the golf cart was way ahead of us. And so we wound up with, I would say, what, a hundred and fifty extra flags? But but that's because we couldn't distribute anything after about the library. Because we didn't have any flags and the cart was already up the hill somewhere. So we couldn't go back to reload. And but if we had been able to, would have been just.
A hundred or so would have.
You took, you, oh, you did?
Went down, back down the hill and.
So anyways, uh to finish up the park, I think uh. Uh everything, and then the other, the summer programs up and running, and uh life is good. That's all I got.
Uh I don't have anything. The planning board had two executive sessions back to back and um. The harbor advisory won't meet again until September.
Did it take off the summer?
Yeah. Yeah.
Both people.
All right, I understand. The rationale, I guess, you're right. You're nowhere to be found.
Let's see, I, the school um had a meeting of. What has been called the number crunching. Which uh consisted of the um. Superintendent, I think the um Director of Finance and Facilities was online. She had an automobile accident and was considerably under the weather for. Um the two town administrators, um the two chairman of the uh select boards, or selectmen. Um and the two chairs of the finance committees. Um no one was injured. Um there was a clear difference in opinion um between the two town. All all of the representatives of the, the representatives of each town as to how involved. The uh. Finance committee should be in defining the program of the schools. Um. Um we. Nothing was resolved. Um except that the next meeting will be a workshop with the same, well. One replacement player, um it will be a workshop to understand. Um the way the school does programming, particularly in the high school. And um. I think. I think when everybody starts with the same assumptions uh about how how the schools. Make their decisions, we will, we will be in a bit, in better shape, but. Um there is clearly a big difference of opinion about whether um excellence is important. Uh I also met with the um. But went to the Board of Health meeting uh. And but we will be talking to them on the tense and then. They they. They know very defensive of their priorities.
I don't have anything on the temp on my calendar, so. Just I I I can make it, but I I keep hearing we're gonna meet with the Board of Health.
Oh.
And I.
Let me send something out. Like two hours ago.
That was FinCom.
No.
There's another one on Board of Health.
Said Board of Health.
Yeah, you've got a Board of Health.
No, I saw this today, but what I'm saying is I had not heard of this meeting prior to this note. So, thank you.
Right.
So this is gonna be, they normally meet Thursday mornings, but this will be an evening.
This will be an evening meeting.
Three thirty this afternoon.
Three thirty?
Three thirty-seven in my.
Six thirty.
Yeah, it's a.
Gonna do it three thirty, so we do three thirty two. And the FinCom just came up, as far as, we we haven't set the dates on the FinCom.
Yeah.
I just signed stuff now.
I don't, I am, I don't have that.
We can skip for liaison reports. Thank you all. Spending lots of extra time on stuff. Um. There is now to the consent agenda. Um. Which. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from consent agenda?
I do have some questions on the canvassing license.
Okay. So with without, for the consent agenda, do we have a vote? Um and to approve items A, B, and C?
I move the select board approve items A, B, and C of the consent agenda items.
Second.
Discussion. Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And says, yes, and John.
Yes.
Okay.
My question on the uh canvassing license, there was some chitter chatter on um. Facebook about some canvassing going on about some company and. The canvasser was making people uncomfortable. I don't recall the name of the company.
It was some mosquito spray.
So that was mosquito spray. This is not that company.
No, this is uh.
What are, do we know what they are doing?
Sunrun is a. Is there, is there any? Regulation or bylaw related to canvassing?
Should there be?
Well, they're they're applying for a license.
Right, I mean, there must be something.
There must be something, otherwise would they.
They put the, I put this application together because it was nothing. Because they.
What, they call?
Yeah.
So they assume that there's some sort of regulation?
Always came up before, I think it came up when Greg was here, so that's why I ran this application by him and. Um just so we had something in writing, then somebody just sending an email or.
It's not uh abnormal for municipalities to have that um. Gives the town an opportunity to pre-vet the company, gives us contact information. Gives um, you know, a document to the actual solicitors to show uh residents that they've. You know, they're, they've been checked out by the town, they're not, yeah, exactly.
And it gives us an opportunity to send them home if they haven't.
If they're not. Yeah. Behaving correctly, you're correct.
Yeah, me, me too. I'm just wondering, what are we approving if we don't have, I mean, we're just making up a license concept on the block?
Just went into a book of forms and say, this looks good.
I just, I basically, right from Rockports.
Do we need any more meat to it, I guess, Tony, do we, is the question?
I mean, Sunrun is a very reputable solar company.
Okay.
Uh and the fact that they came to us on their own.
Right.
It's good.
Yeah.
Uh so, you know, with this approval, I think it allows, just the fact we're talking about it, people are aware that, you know, they'll be in the area, they do. Offer a good service that residents can evaluate for themselves, but at least it's been. You know, if there's any issues, we have a contact to to talk to. I think. It does make sense for us to formalize some sort of process for the future, though.
I agree.
So maybe we need to add that to the action list.
Uh what, research our, research our.
I believe it does not exist, and I think we like to um ask. The. Administering this assistant to pull up some examples. And and.
You'll start with Rockport.
I think it it wants to be a bylaw.
Yeah.
So that's.
So then we could, it's something we could do to target for Fall Town Meeting?
Yeah.
I'll have to look at it. I don't know if it's necessarily required to be a general bylaw. It could be just a.
Okay.
Uh so maybe we don't have to be that long, right?
I don't know which way it is, but I'm a, I'm a fan of recourse to. Unreputable. Who comes through.
We we did a um. With solar in particular, actually, the town, we actually solicited companies uh. And pre-vetted them, and then uh, you know, there was three or four companies that got the approval from the town. So this way residents knew they were reputable and trustworthy uh versus just someone knocking on your door randomly.
Right, I'm doing the driveway next door.
And we were, you know, our green energy committee was trying to promote. Solar, uh so that was a way to do it. Um but it would be good that, there are gonna be things like the mosquito company that you talked about that. You know, might be not, might not be something that we're uh soliciting ourselves, but uh, you know, to. We don't have any contact for them, we don't know. Right, so we're seeing it on social media, but we don't have any info on our own, so it might be good to. Have some sort of policy where they're required to get a uh a permit from the, from the town hall.
My inclination is to make it a part of the bylaw. Uh because that's regularly available. I don't know how anybody would find, the the. Policies of the Board of Selectmen are kind of a secret.
Not easy to find on the website.
Sure.
And we can, like you say, we can have this time for uh fall special time meeting.
Yeah, and and that that way, everybody comes to town meeting knows that this is happening and and.
Yeah, I'll do some research on it and see what what it takes and come, come back to the board with something. Good.
Okay. Can we approve the license?
That license is, yeah, it's not for approved, this, we don't have.
Oh.
We'll make them, we'll give it a make the change approval. Okay, well, I. I move the select board approve item D under consent agenda.
Second. Jeff.
Yes. Yes.
Kathy, yes, and says, yes, and John says, yes. Okay, the next item is the town administration support.
Uh so uh it's day three. Um and uh, you know, so I wanna thank uh the town for welcoming me, the staff. And then in the town, and of course, all of you, and everyone that I've met so far has been extremely welcoming and helpful and and. Um has offered to help in any way, um so it's. It's been a busy uh three days, uh especially starting off with the strike on on day one. And then, you know, it being a short week uh with the holiday and then all that, so we're, we're, we're uh. Catching up, uh we've been pretty busy, I think, yeah, for the last few days, um but I've. Been working closely with Chuck on the Republic Trash Collection issue, and Tiffany's. Uh involved heavily to make sure that we're getting communication out as fast as we possibly can. Um. I've met with our new town moderator, uh today I met with the town administrator Brendan in Essex. Um so I'm. You know, trying to get out and meet as many folks as I can uh as soon as possible. Uh attended my first concert in the park last week, and my first uh Fourth of July parade. Bumped into Senator Tar there, talked about getting together with him as well. Um. Getting caught up on some personnel stuff and day-to-day activities. Getting caught up on some personnel stuff and day-to-day activities, we have a, we also have a vacancy on the Board of Registersers. Registrars, uh, which chapter uh, fifty-one requires certified mail to the Democrat and Republican. Uh, committees, local committees, to provide us a list of uh, potential candidates. So I put that draft letter together, uh, and working with our town clerk on that as well. I will be at the uh, concert in the park tomorrow night as well, for anyone that's there. Uh, happy to introduce myself and actually we're, I'll be doing uh, office hours on the first Tuesday of every month from. Three to five PM, uh, so that's tomorrow as well. We also signed on to a, uh, back to the Republic issue, we uh. Were signing on to a letter with the other communities that have Republic as their contractor. Uh, to urge them to negotiate a contract and settle uh, this issue as fast as they can, uh, through that. I asked uh, the other towns if they'd be interested in having a group call with Republic. Uh, because it's just seemed that each of us were talking to them individually and we all have different needs and. Uh, so that uh, is scheduled for tomorrow as well. Yeah, so I'm still just getting caught up, so this is, it's a short and sweet report for now.
Welcome. Is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
So I guess.